We are, we are live.
This time it's seven oh nine, like to call the Galleon City Council meeting to order, it's December twenty second, seven oh nine P M. First of all, have the pledge allegiance flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
States of America.
And to their family.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence for the invocation. Okay, we have no call council members.
Mr. Bodkins. Mr. Bodkins. Mr. Bodkins.
You can't hear?
Okay, well, he's here. Ms. Earlston. She's muted. Doctor.
Here.
Mister Ivy.
I'm here.
You should have said that. Mister Richard.
Here.
Mister Triplett.
Here.
Roll call of elected officials and safety service director.
Baron Larry.
Here.
Auditor Baldur.
Here.
Director Law Palmer.
Yeah.
Treasurer Sparks. Safety Service Director Ward.
Here.
Okay, next you've all received a copy of the minutes of the December eighth council meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes from December eighth regular meeting.
Heard the motion by Mister Richard is second.
I second that.
Mister Ivy seconded. Any additions or corrections? If not all in favor, say aye.
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 The opposed likewise. Minutes approved of the December eighth meeting. Uh, next we have a whole list of ones that has to be added to the agenda tonight. We'll start with first one is ordinance twenty twenty dash eighty eight. They have a motion to add that to the agenda.
I'll make a motion to add ordinance twenty twenty dash eighty eight to the agenda.
Motion to Dr. Felner, second by Mrs. Earlston. Uh, roll call.
Mister Bodkins. Oh, he still can't hear. I don't know what's going on with him. Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
You'll have to raise your hand, go thumbs up if, if you can, if you're for it. Doctor Felner.
Yes.
Mister Ivy.
Yes.
Mister Richard. Mister Richard. Mister Triplett.
Yes.
Okay, pass. Um, friend Mister Richard did?
Yeah, he, he said, yeah, he's just cutting in and out. I think he's all right now.
Next is, uh, ordinance twenty twenty dash eighty nine. Have a motion to add that. Mister.
I will make a motion to add ordinance twenty twenty dash eighty nine to the agenda.
Mister Earlston, uh, made the motion, second by Mister Triplett. Roll call.
Mister Bodkins. I don't know what's wrong. Why he can't? Are you on your iPad?
You can't hear.
Yeah. Hold on. Let me see what's going on with him. He probably didn't join with audio or something. Well, why? He's not muted on mine. Can you hear now?
On speakerphone.
Okay. Well, is he on his iPad or the computer? Okay, we'll have him. Well, he, he worked before.
Is the volume turned down?
Is his volume turned down? Is it, his speaker turned up too? I'm gonna have him go out and come back in and make sure he hits the audio, audio. Going with, which one with iPad audio? All right, all right.
Julie, she could just put the phone down in front of him and put him on speaker.
Yeah. Okay. Is it, is it, oh, he had the speaker off? On the phone? Okay, all right. All right, he's on the phone. All right, hold on, let me turn this up so I can. Can you hear Ken? Okay. Well, where am I hearing you from? Okay, hold on. All right, there I got you, I think. Okay, not a meeting for this to happen. Are you, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Okay. All right, so we're adding eighty nine to the agenda. Mister Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Doctor Felner.
Yes.
Mister Ivy.
Yes.
Mister Richard.
Yes.
Mister Triplett.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance twenty twenty dash eighty nine has been added to the agenda, but six and a vote. Next is twenty twenty dash ninety. Have a motion to add that to the agenda.
I'll make the motion, Mister President, to add ordinance twenty twenty dash ninety to the agenda.
The motion by Mister Ivy to have a second. Second by Mister Triplett, seconded, roll call.
Mister Bodkins.
Yeah.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Doctor Felner.
Yes.
Mister Ivy.
Yes.
Mister Richard.
Yes.
Mister Triplett.
Yes.
Orders twenty twenty dash ninety has been added to the agenda by six and a vote. Next is orders twenty twenty dash ninety two. Have a motion to add that to the agenda.
I'll make a motion to add ordinance, uh, twenty twenty dash ninety two to the agenda.
Motion for Dr. Felner to have a second. Second by Mister Ivy, roll call.
Mister Bodkins.
Yeah.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Doctor Felner.
Yes.
Mister Ivy.
Yes.
Mister Richard.
Yes.
Mister Triplett.
Yes.
Orders twenty twenty dash ninety two has been added to the agenda by six and a vote. Next is, uh, twenty twenty dash ninety three. Have a motion to add that.
Mister President, I'd like to add ordinance twenty twenty dash ninety three to the agenda for tonight.
Read the motion by Mister Richards, second by Mister Ivy, roll call.
Mister Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Doctor Felner.
Yes.
Mister Ivy.
Yes.
Mister Richard.
Yes.
Mister Triplett.
Yes.
By six and a vote, or, or just twenty twenty dash ninety three has been added to the agenda. Next one is orders twenty twenty dash ninety four. Do I hear a motion to add that to the agenda?
I'll make a motion to add twenty twenty dash ninety four.
With the motion by Mister Triplett, do you have a second?
I will second that.
Mrs. Earlston, second, roll call.
Mister Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Doctor Felner.
Yes.
Mister Ivy.
Yes.
Mister Richard. Mister Richard. Mister Triplett.
Yes.
Okay, uh, north's twenty twenty days, four has been added to the agenda by six and a vote. Next is orders twenty twenty day ninety five. Hear a motion for that? Mister Triplett made the motion, second by Mister Richards, roll call.
Mister Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Doctor Felner.
Yes.
Mister Ivy.
Yes.
Mister Richard.
Yes.
Mister Triplett.
Yes.
The orders twenty twenty dash ninety five has been added to the agenda by six and a vote. Next is, uh, orders twenty twenty dash ninety six. Hear a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion to add ordinance twenty twenty dash ninety six to the agenda.
Read the motion by Dr. Felner, seconded by Mister Ivy. Mister Ivy, uh, roll call.
Mister Bodkins.
Yeah.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Doctor Felner.
Yes.
Mister Ivy.
Yes.
Mister Richard.
Yes.
Mister Triplett.
Yes.
Orders twenty twenty day ninety six has been added to the agenda by six and a vote. Now we need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Is that Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Yes, Dr. Felner made the motion, seconded by Mister Triplett. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed likewise, the, uh, approved agenda as amended, been approved by voice vote. Moving on to legislation, ordinance twenty twenty day shady force for reading.
All right. Ordinance number twenty twenty dash eighty four and tell ordinance amending ordinance number two thousand nineteen eighty five, permanent twenty twenty appropriations by transferring funds in various funds as part of reimbursements for wages with COVID relief funds with the exception of section two and declaring an emergency.
Okay, heard the reading of this ordinance, uh, was to take this, Dr. Felner?
Yes, uh, this came through, um, uh, finance committee and, um, as the heading, uh, indicates, these are, um, section two is a transfer within a fund. Um, the other sections are transfers from COVID dollars to the various funds, um, to, uh, essentially pay us, pay us back. Um, Eunice, is that an accurate, uh, synopsis of that?
You are correct.
Okay, so, um, you know, you could see the various, uh, dollars. Um, if we want to, um, uh, go section by section, that's certainly your prerogative, but I, I think it's going to be pretty straightforward. Um, uh, I believe that later on tonight, there may be, uh, another ordinance that is, uh, similar, not exactly the case, but, but similar. So we're, we're getting to the year end where, um, we need to account for those, uh, COVID dollars, um, before we lose them. So I would ask, um, that if there are no questions or comments, that we suspend the rules on ordinance twenty twenty dash eighty four. Obviously, I will hold that motion if there are questions.
Anybody have any questions on this?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Dr. Felner, second by Mister Triplett. Suspend the rules on this.
Doctor Felner.
Yes.
Mister Triplett.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mister Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Mister Ivy.
Yes.
Mister Richard.
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules passed by six and a vote. Discussion on the ordinance.
Mister Carl. I'll make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty dash eighty four.
For the motion by Mister Triplett, do you have a second by Mister Ivy? Discussion. Roll call.
Mister Triplett.
Yes.
Mister Ivy.
Yes.
Mister Richard.
Yes.
Doc, Mister Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Doctor Felner.
Yes.
Orders twenty twenty day forty has passed by six and a vote. Moving on to orders twenty twenty dash eighty five, first reading.
All right, I'm trying to do a lot of things right here. Ordinance number twenty twenty to eighty five and ordinance appropriating property interest as described as parcel twenty eight now owned by Susan E. Shealy for the purpose of making or repairing roads which are open to the public without charge, authorizing the appropriation of funds for deposit with the clerk of courts and authorizing the city director of law to file a petition for appropriation in the court of common pleas Crawford County, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Heard the reading of this ordinance, uh, discussion?
Um, yes, this, uh, ordinance along with the, uh, next two, uh, eighty six and eighty seven are similar. Um, what has happened in the acquiring of easements, either permanent or temporary? There have been some properties that, um, we've not been able to either gain permission or, um, gain notification. And so the next step, uh, in order to us, for us to, um, meet the ODOT deadline for the widening of five ninety eight, um, these need.
What the heck?
What's that?
Oh, hold on, I lost everything. Just went black and dark here. Hold on, am I still on live?
Yes. Yes.
It's like, holy moly, my, I mean, my computer logged off and everything. Hold on.
We're still live and recording. Can I continue while you?
Yeah.
Are we still live on, on Facebook though?
I can't tell, I've got Kenny.
Yes, yes, we are.
Okay, good, then we can move ahead, yeah.
So, um, the, uh, the next step in the process is to, um, go through the court of common pleas and, um, you're, we're going to see other legislation, uh, tonight, similar in language that did not come on, uh, did not come through committee that we voted on. Mister Palmer, how am I doing?
You're doing excellent, Doc Felner. I will tell you that. Let me just piggyback on what Doc shared. Uh, these three ordinances, this one, the next two, and then the last four on the agenda for this evening are all basically the same ordinance with different names and different pieces of property involved. But as Doctor Felner shared, these are pieces of property that we, at this point in time, are not able to, uh, to show you a signed agreement. So we have to just protect ourselves. Uh, we're, we're asking council to pass these seven, uh, pieces of legislation authorizing my office to file for an official appropriation of property. It's basically, in essence, taking of property. Uh, nothing that we want to do, uh, much prefer to do it in a, a friendly way. Um, but as has been shared, either because of lack of contact, uh, or successful contact, or lack of an agreement on a, on a price. We, we are in the position of doing this. Uh, those appropriation actions will not be filed until likely the, the first week of January, giving us plenty of time to continue. Uh, the consulting group with ODOT or colon is in the process of trying to contact some of these uh, and continues to do so. So if there's success there, those won't be filed. Uh, this is again recognizing that the next council meeting is on January the twelfth, the next official council meeting. Uh, it just made sense to get these approved.
Hey, were there questions on this?
Um, if there are no further discussions, I know that we have to take, uh, each ordinance individually and not as a bulk. Uh, so I would like to make, uh, a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance twenty twenty dash eighty five and proceed to the final reading.
And I will second that motion.
Seconded by Mrs. Earlston. Roll call.
Doctor Felner.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Mister Ivy.
Yes.
Mister Richard.
Yes.
Mister Triplett.
Yes.
Mister Bodkins.
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules passed by six and a vote, uh, discussion on the ordinance. Do I have a motion to pass?
I'll make a motion to pass.
Okay, Mister Triplett made the motion, second. Mister Ivy, seconded it, uh, discussion. Roll call.
Mister Triplett.
Yes.
Mister Ivy.
Yes.
Mister Richard.
Yes.
Mister Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Doctor Felner.
Yes.
The orders twenty twenty day eighty five passed by six and a vote. Next is orders twenty twenty day eighty six. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I gotta read it, though, I think.
Okay.
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash eighty six and ordinance appropriating property interest described as parcel forty four now owned by Edgar, Ed, Edgar R. Trent and Vicky L. Trent for the purpose of making or repairing roads which are open to the public without charge, authorizing the appropriation of funds for deposit with the clerk of courts and authorizing the city director of law to file a petition for appropriation in the court of common pleas Crawford County, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
You've heard the reading of the, uh, ordinance twenty twenty day eighty six, do a.
Mister President. There's no questions. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance twenty twenty dash eighty six and move to a final vote.
You've heard the motion by Mister Ivy, suspend the rules. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Mister.
Bodkin seconded, he said, okay.
Bodkin seconded, uh, discussion. Roll call.
Mister Ivy.
Yes.
Mister Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Doctor Felner.
Yes.
Mister Richard.
Yes.
Mister Triplett.
Yes.
Motion passed by six and a vote, no discussion on the ordinance.
I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty dash eighty six.
Read the motion to pass it by.
Second.
Felner seconded by Mister Ivy. Discussion. If none, roll call.
Doctor Felner.
Yes.
Mister Ivy.
Yes.
Mister Richard.
Yes.
Mister Triplett.
Yes.
Mister Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Passed by six and a vote. Next is orders twenty twenty day seven, first reading.
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash eighty seven and ordinance appropriating property interest described as parcel fifty six now owned by Taylor Hamrick for the purpose of making or repairing roads which are open to the public without charge, authorizing the appropriation of funds for deposit with the clerk of courts and authorizing the city director of law to file a petition for appropriation in the court of common pleas Crawford County, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Read the ordinance and its discussion.
Mister President, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and proceed to the final reading on ordinance twenty twenty dash eighty seven.
The motion by Doctor Felner to suspend the rules, um, seconded by Mister Ivy, is that a first, um, roll call?
Doctor Felner.
Yes.
Mister Ivy.
Yes.
Mister Richard.
Yes.
Mister Triplett.
Yes.
Mister Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Okay, passed by six and a vote, discussion on the ordinance.
I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty dash eighty seven.
Read the motion by Doctor Felner, do you have a second? Mister Triplett is in the first, he seconded, uh, discussion. If none, roll call.
Doctor Felner.
Yes.
Mister Triplett.
Yes.
Mister Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Mister Ivy.
Yes.
Mister Richard.
Yes.
Twenty twenty day seventy has passed by six and a vote. Next is orders twenty twenty dash eighty eight, first reading.
Order number twenty twenty dash eighty eight and tell ordinance recognizing that certain disbursements of the city of Guyan are consistent with guidelines of the CARES Act and approving the same and declaring an emergency.
Okay, you heard the reading of twenty twenty dash eighty eight. Was, somebody wants to take this?
Yes, this, uh, the, discussion of this ordinance, uh, came through finance committee. However, um, it was necessary to vote the ordinance onto tonight's agenda because the, um, dollar amounts for the recipients of the, um, COVID dollars by the city was not yet determined. So, um, in, in the ordinance, we see before us, we have, uh, four areas, um, and I'm just, uh, gonna turn it over to the mayor for some, um, explanation on that.
The call.
Yeah, if Julie could put that up there, um, those areas. That ordinance.
All right, I, I, hold on a second. Now, what's go, what's going on? Okay. We lost, we lost Kenny. He hung up on us, okay.
He's back.
He's back. Somehow it hung up, so, all right. Um, so what were you asking me to do?
Have that ordinance that Doc wants me to, to detail a little bit.
I can get that up, sorry.
Just gonna bring back shades of, uh, auditor Trish, cause I think I'll probably hand off quickly to, to either, uh, Eunice or, or Nikki, but let's get that up there.
Actually complete yet either, though.
Pardon me?
This ordinance isn't kind of, it isn't quite complete yet, and so.
What they're talking about, Julie.
There's not a dollar amount in the, uh, chamber of commerce.
There's also attachments that are not attached, Doc Felner.
Okay.
You referenced in section two, those haven't been attached yet.
Have some, but they're not up to date, I don't think.
Yep.
So in your opinion, Mister Palmer, should we table this ordinance?
Well, you have two choices. You can either table it, uh, to the next meeting, or you could have a first reading on it and then just amend it next time with that correct dollar amount for the chamber of commerce, uh, and the attachments also. But it's depending on what the mayor shares. I don't know what he has to share, so I defer to him.
It would be, if I could ask a question, if we do table it till January, the twelfth meeting, are we running out of, will that be past the expiration date?
I would think you want to, I think you'd want to table it to the next council meeting, which I believe you're going to be setting tonight.
We'll have to have a special meeting here.
Week.
I just want to make sure we didn't lose it, lose it, if we didn't get it passed tonight, so.
Yeah, we'll have to go to a special meeting, which we have other.
It's passed by the end of the year.
Okay. All right. So, uh, for discussion, are you, you want to?
Think we, take it away. Most important to note on this, Doc, is that in the legislation that is, has been passed by Congress, don't know what that, it, it's fate will be as far as, um, the president, but the, under the legislation, we're able to carry over CARES Act dollars, uh, till twelve thirty one twenty one. Okay, so that was be the, the, probably the first bit of information. Uh, and that relates to chamber. I think under that situation, we were unlikely to supplement. I wouldn't recommend supplementing and using all of the available CARES funds uh, to supplement the program. I believe there's in the neighborhood of three hundred thousand dollars going to local businesses just based on what the commissioners had allocated to the chamber. So on the, the issue of how much for the, for the chamber, uh, I think, uh, I'd recommend we, uh, carry over those unexpended dollars. So that's part of the maybe.
Okay.
Of a three or four point. The attachments that Thomas is referencing, I'm really in, a little bit in the dark unfortunately about what those attachments, uh, are. If they're the individual folks that got credits or the other places that we want to, uh, expense the dollars, then I'm not sure what the attachments are, Doc.
Mister Palmer, can you, um,
Yeah, sure.
enlighten us with the attachments?
The attachments are basically just, the council passed several weeks ago and or months ago, authorization, when it passed the utility credit authorization, the ability for the mayor's office to expend uh, CARES dollars consistent with the CARES Act. All the attachments are, are those expenses, just so council can say, yep, they're all consistent with the CARES Act. That's all it is.
Okay.
Amping what the mayor's office has done.
Um, s- so, uh, will, uh, Mister Mayor, will there be, you know, we, we've enumerated four areas of potential recipients. Um, and since there is going to be a carryover and this ordinance will probably, um, not uh, go to the final reading this evening, uh, can, do you, do you anticipate, especially when you, you guys have a little bit of breathing space up there, um, that, that list could be expanded? In other words, we've got the food bank, the, a couple of daycares, um, the, the chamber for small businesses, you know, is an unknown and, and I get it if the, uh, CARES dollars are being carried. It, you know, is an unknown and and I get it, if the uh CARES dollars are being carried over to twenty one. Um and the county is going to give the chambers a fair amount of money. Then, you know, that leaves us either money to divvy up amongst the previous three. Or add areas to the list.
If if I might, the other issue that I'd wanna add here before I uh ask Eunice uh or or uh Nikki to. To add theirs, I I is that uh what I wanna do with this ordinance. Is a little bit like I was talking about last night, and that is to try to make it uh getting this. Portion of CARES Act funding that involves money we're going to expense this year. Get that ordinance done and the 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 projects, if you'll uh accept that word, the projects that will fund. Next year, possibly carryover with carryover dollars. We don't identify those, we only pay the expenses that we know at, that we have as hard and fast expenses. So I'm gonna stop before I get out into the, in in a little bit um. Too deep on that and just see if Eunice or Nikki has anything to contribute, if that's okay.
I, I actually have a question, Mayor, and I, you might have more up to date than I do. The last bit of information that I got was in an email this morning that it was pending with Congress, has it moved forward or is it still before Congress? The extension.
Yeah, I'm not, I, only because you ask would I give you the answer, I, I'm not big shot in any way, but. I got a a call from uh Congress Congressman Jordan's office. And they said that the, that that's where I got the information that there was that extension.
Okay, cuz my.
That's out there, I mean, again, like I said, if uh if the, if the president were to veto that. You know, I don't know, but that. That that probably is off, but anyway.
That, that was kind of my question, concern was if it, you know, if it hadn't moved forward, you know, I didn't wanna risk um. Losing that or having to send, you know, three hundred thousand or so back and we're kind of running to the end of the year. Um so on the other side is the mayor's passing it off. With that question aside, the um, the funds that are listed here um to go out. Will need to be reallocated, excuse me. Reallocated at um the next meeting that you guys have, that is part of the issue, I just got the utility. Credit information on Friday, so I'm. Along with the budget and everything else, I'm trying to get all of that stuff calculated so that funds can be moved around. The other side of it is, is that I have to be able to process and catch up on bills to pay any of the bills that are being paid out of.
Okay, I don't know if he's unmuted or not.
Yeah, there's Ken, hey, that's what I wanted to, that's what I was trying to say, I'm not, I didn't say it very well, Eunice, is that. We could probably separate out those known expenses from this kind of guessing at how much the chamber needs. Or until this afternoon, when you finally got the uh, or whenever it was, you got the, the detail on the utility credits. Uh I really wanna um limit this ordinance that uh spends out money in twenty twenty. And and not try to, and get rid of the parts, if you will, delete, what's, would be the right word. Uh amend out the parts that are, that. We don't need to spend this year.
Okay, sure, I see what you're saying, yeah, I can um, I can definitely work on that and get those, get things around and get them ready, hopefully tomorrow.
If not. Yeah, I think what, so then Carl, I or and Doc, what I would recommend is, as a, a next step is either to. Give it a first reading. And everyone knows that we'll have to have it probably one more Zoom meeting, think there may be a couple of other loose ends. That we'll have to tie up legislatively. And um. I don't wanna, I don't wanna table it and then pull it off the table, I'd rather, if it's alright with council, I'd suggest we go ahead and give it a first reading. Uh acknowledging that it, it'll never, it 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 can't pass the way that it's, that it uh stands now.
Mayor, I'm sorry, would we wanna maybe eliminate the Galleon Crestline Chamber line and go ahead and. Proceed with, like you said, the ones that we can expend yet this year?
Yeah, council, I think that's, that what Eunice said's a good suggestion and. That there will be more business relief money that will come from local sources, state and federal sources, so I think. Like I said, there's, as I believe, a little over three hundred thousand that, that is going to go uh from that chamber, uh commissioner funded program. So it's, it um. Holding that money back, I don't, I don't feel great about it, but I think it's the more prudent thing to do.
I, I, I would agree.
Good idea. Take that, like delete that chamber line and in the, before it's passed finally, and then uh. You should be able to move ahead. Council should.
You wanna do that tonight, or do you wanna do the meeting next week?
Well, I think th- to hold this to the first reading is the way to go and um we can look at the modified version. If we need to make motions to change, um we'll have all of the paperwork uh and amend uh. Appendages that uh Mister Palmer referred to. Uh to take it off the table and drag it through committee or, you know, put it back on the agenda by vote, I think is uh. We know the spirit of the, the ordinance, we're trying to help local areas. I think taking the, the Chamber of Commerce off at this point is a good idea, they've got money coming in from the uh. County as uh Mister Larry uh referred, um also. I think doing it next year in twenty one will help us perhaps generate a new list of recipients. And I I mean, I, I think that's the way to go, I do have one question, uh Mister Larry, is it too late? To apply for the electric credit?
Well, you know, Doc, I think yes, for this year.
Yes.
Uh of one of the. Uh you know, somebody who is a, is a real strong business, um we need to get the money to the business may ask that. Um you know, why are we pushing it into next year, I think it's largely because that utility credit. Um you know, that's, that's gonna be a recurring or an ongoing need for people who are, have been. Sort of knocked down uh as a result of layoffs or any kind of covid related stuff, so.
Here's a reason, one of the reasons that I asked, um I had a discussion with um. A couple of employees today that did not apply to it, one of them said that, oh, well, I don't think that I. Uh qualified, and I think she overread the quote unquote qualifications. And the other person said, well, I can afford it and, you know, we're not gonna apply for it, which I. Appreciate uh the spirit of that, but uh you know, the, the defending. How you were affected uh by covid this year is it not hard to do. Uh there, there wasn't anybody that escaped uh the rap, so I'm glad that that's gonna be an option. Um in twenty one with some of the carryover money.
I'd like to, yes, it is, that's, I think that's probably one of the top um, the uses, it gets to as many people. Right, you know, if you will, uh regular daily galleonites instead of uh. Some of the federal uh program went to. A variety interests, so. Won't be diplomatic, this is, we've beaten it to death, so.
Mrs. Earleston?
Yes, I have two questions, um. One is by holding off on the Chamber of Commerce, are we in any way putting ourselves at risk of. Possibly losing or not being able to use that money if, if perhaps that would get vetoed?
Yeah, well, uh the, I guess the answer is, yeah, that's a remote possibility, I think. Um you know, if you, if you're a, if you overread the news, you've probably seen articles out there where. Uh Congress is getting gearing up if they have to override a veto. Um I, I, I think in um, I think it's a calculated risk.
Okay, alright, so then my second question is um back to the extending the electric. Uh qualifications into next year, will there be another um. Form that will be mailed out with the bills to let people uh apply again for that?
I think probably, I think the, a longer answer would be, it's really what council would, would uh. I'd get a little direction there and uh a a a check with the uh director of law. I think largely they'd be better off if we had that uh documentation of a, of a second request. It's really not much, we, all we did was require a signature on that insert, so we'll probably. We'll probably be right back where we started with uh over a thousand pieces of, of uh. Of uh applications to process, but that's a good thing, so yeah, I think we'll probably have a, a separate application next year.
Very, so similar to what we did this last time?
Yeah, probably unless the tweak that would make it simpler.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Why, sure.
Mister Ivy?
Yeah, um just clarification, I luckily I just got off, read the news before we got on tonight, there's two threats of a veto today, the covid relief package. Passed ninety three to seven in the Senate, so I feel that we're gonna be okay with the veto there, the other veto that we're referring to is defense bill that came out this afternoon. But that's two separate issues, so um but just to give us peace of mind that the veto probably will be overridden if he were to override the covid veto, so. Um my question though is that when we were in finance committee, there was mention of giving uh some.
You froze. This is gonna be long, Aaron, you froze.
Boy, we keep having computers.
I know.
Probably internet issues.
Yeah, internet, Ken, can you hear now?
Yes.
Okay, and we can hear you, okay, I hadn't confirmed that, but I was thinking, so if we can get Aaron unfroze now.
While we're waiting for him to unfreeze, just to kind of piggyback on what the mayor was saying, and Aaron, the notice that I received was from the Office of Budget Management. Who is responsible and and how we can expend the funds and everything, so they are preparing for it to extend. But still, who knows, but they are preparing for that.
Aaron's not back yet, so. I'm waiting for him.
Any other questions while we wait on Aaron?
I'm going to.
No, I was just gonna make a, a point, uh Mister President, uh I agree with Doc Fowler that uh. To uh allow this to uh go through the first reading. Uh and then uh have it on the agenda uh for the next. Council meeting in the near future.
Anything Aaron, there had to, pretend to this yet?
Um I'm texting him, CP seven. Up, here he comes. Here he comes.
Aaron, go ahead.
Sorry, everyone, I completely froze up, I don't, I, I was just curious about the churches on the. I think that's where I left off.
Yeah, we, uh Aaron, we never, uh we reached out to them, uh but we. Uh we did not uh ever uh purchase cards or go that route.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Do you have a discussion on this, first reading? If not, consider this first reading and we'll move on to the next ordinance twenty twenty dash eighty nine, first reading.
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash eighty nine, entitled ordinance authorizing the safety service director to accept certain easements and acquisitions of property. Relating to free parcels adjacent to the state route five ninety widening project to execute any and all documents relating thereto. And to pay the owners of said parcels the negotiated amounts for the acquisitions of said property rights and declaring an emergency.
Read the reading, ordinance twenty twenty uh base ninety.
Eighty nine.
Nine and discussion.
I'm assuming that these are three additional properties that have come to an agreement, is that correct? So um the, the five ninety eight project uh can continue. And uh I, Julie, these are outside the city limits, those are the part of the ten that were.
Well, part of the ten were, part of the ten left were both inside and outside.
Alright.
These are Huggins, Huggins and J and F.
Gotcha, okay. Um I, I think it's a similar to past uh ordinances, so I'd like to make a motion. To suspend the rules and proceed to the final reading on ordinance twenty twenty dash eighty nine.
And I will second that.
The motion by Dr. Fowler to spend the rules of this ordinance, second by Mrs. Earleston, roll call.
Doctor Fowler.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Mister Ivy.
Yes.
Mister Richard.
Yes.
Mister Triplett.
Yes.
Mister Bodkins.
Yes.
Passed by six and a vote, no discussion on the ordinance.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty dash eighty nine.
Read the motion by uh Mister, Mister, yeah, okay. By Mister Bodkins, um discussion. Roll call.
Mister Triplett.
Yes.
Mister Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Doctor Fowler.
Yes.
Mister Ivy.
Yes.
Mister Richard.
Yes.
Passed by six and a vote, moving on then to twenty twenty dash ninety two.
Ninety.
Ninety, ninety, okay, skip one, uh ninety.
Yeah, ordinance number twenty twenty dash ninety, entitled ordinance amending ordinance number two two twenty nineteen eighty five. Permanent twenty twenty appropriations by transferring and appropriating funds in various funds as part of reimbursements for wages. With covid relief funds and declaring an emergency.
Read the ordinance, discussion.
Yes, um I I kind of alluded to this ordinance earlier um by saying that. Again, these were transfers. Uh back to city um funds from the covid uh fund. And I don't, Eunice, does anything here need elaboration?
No, this one's pretty straightforward and simple, I just, I do have a question, I don't know if this is for Thomas or Julie, but. The header has transferring and appropriating, these are all just transfers, we are not appropriating any of the funds. I don't know.
The one I picked up.
Okay, I didn't know if it made a difference or not, I know you were probably using a previous.
I did.
Yeah, so I don't know.
Make a motion to remove the word appro. And appropriating from ordinance twenty twenty dash ninety.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, motion by Dr. Fowler, second by Mrs. Earleston.
Hold on a second, no, that's your.
Roll call.
Earleston, okay, Doctor Fowler.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Mister Ivy.
Yes.
Mister Richard.
Yes.
Mister Triplett.
Yes.
Mister Bodkins.
Yes.
He passed by six and a vote, uh back to discussion on the ordinance.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to uh suspend the rules and proceed to the final reading on the amended ordinance twenty twenty dash ninety.
Read the motion to suspend the rules by. For the motion to suspend the rules by Dr. Fowler. Second by uh Mr. Bodkins, roll call.
Dr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins? Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplett?
Yes.
And the rules passed six and O vote, discussion on the ordinance? Mr. Yeah, Mr. Triplett? Made the motions.
Did, who made the motion?
Mr. Triplett.
Oh, he's muted, okay.
I did. Second.
I'm a seconded, discussion? Not roll call.
Mr. Triplett?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins?
Yes.
Earleston?
Yes.
Dr. Fowler?
Yes.
Twenty twenty days ninety is passed by six and O vote, we're on to ordinance twenty twenty days ninety-two's first reading.
Let me get there. Alright. Ordinance number twenty twenty dash ninety-two entitled ordinance adopting permanent annual appropriations for current expenses. And other expenditures of the city of Galleon, state of Ohio during fiscal year ending twenty twenty-one and declaring an emergency.
The reading of the ordinance, discussion?
Yes, um, last week, we had a special uh finance committee meeting on December eighteenth. And then, um, hard to believe that it was just yesterday, we had a committee. Uh of the whole to discuss the uh city's budget for uh next year twenty twenty-one. Um, so before us, we have uh it uh worded in ordinance form. And um we received earlier uh this, this evening um the, the new numbers. So, um, I'm gonna ask the uh mayor to make some comments and uh. Uh also obviously comments from council.
Thanks, Doc, I will, I will, um, you've heard four hours from me. Uh, finance committee members, I know on Friday that there were a number of council members who listened in. Then we, that was two hours, we spent two hours last night refining the numbers. Um, I think that this, uh, two primary thoughts about this budget. One, I think it's the, the best we can do, given these circumstances. Uh and what I mean is that we have um a number of, of uh unprecedented expenses. I don't want to detail everything, but there are situations within the budget. Where the fund balances are going to have to be monitored carefully. So I think that's the, if there's a, a, a negative, it is that um. It's, it, it has some worries, I think everyone who has sat in on the meeting know which funds. Uh, we're gonna have to monitor closely. The second thing I do want to say, however, and then I, and then we, we can go to questions, is that. I think it's important for, for the mayor, and I think for, for those of us who are, you know, keeping track of how this is going. This is, um, the Gallians is among the first budgets that I think uh ci- city councils are looking. Uh at for twenty twenty-one, uh the legislation, knowing how uh difficult our efforts were. I can only imagine that cities that entered into this COVID crisis with less money on reserve. In key funds, how uh much pressure that they are under. Because we're really, I think, in, certainly in a, in a pressure situation, budget-wise compared to previous years. But I guess what I, what I'm trying to say is that I think um this says a lot about where we are financially. That we're able to move ahead uh with necessary confidence, I think. Um, in, in uh this budget to, to get twenty-one uh in place. So I'll just stop there, I don't feel very eloquent tonight, you know, that assumes that I ever am, but. I really, uh, we've talked a lot about this and. I, I will just answer questions, I suppose. Anything?
Mark, take it away.
Well, Tom, I see, just for an instance, I'll be real quick. In the general fund, you went from nine hundred and eighty-five thousand to a hundred and thirty-five thousand over revenue. That's, is that correct?
Which fund?
Re- repeat that.
One oh one.
Oh, general fund, okay.
One oh one, you cut it from nine hundred and eighty-five thousand to a hundred and thirty-five thousand, a hundred and forty-seven. I don't know what you changed, but.
Yeah, I think if you stop right there, stop right there. Uh, it's the big, that, it's the transfer from the street fund. If you see that, if you, that nine double O one, that's down to four hundred and twenty thousand. That was one point two seven one million.
That was the paving?
That was the, the city's, yes, the city's share of the five ninety-eight project, the construction phase of it. So that has been moved, I think if you look at two oh one, you'll see the same amount of spending. And what you'd have to see matching up with that would be the revenue for, in two oh one to support that spending. It'd be under capital improvements down at the bottom, yeah, right there, one double O two five. Or one zero two five, that's where that went, that's where that spending went, Mark. And the revenue for that I, is presumably uh coming from a state infrastructure bank loan.
So that we, we discussed a little bit uh about whether it would be too cumbersome last night. To do that, um, uh, Eunice kind of alluded to um unintended consequences or trickle down. Domino or whatever metaphor you want to use, but um, you know, I think that. One of the things that doing that appeals, it, it takes that. Oh, let's remember to borrow this money, not take it out of cash, and I, I, I think that's important. Um, I, I know that, um, anyway, I, I, I feel uh that, that's a good, that was a good move.
I didn't expect, Mark, the other thing I would want to say, thank you, Doc, I, the other thing I'd want to say about that is that uh there are some. When um. The, the revenue side of this budget, in the general fund where we're talking about this money coming from, that was causing that general. The uh, the revenue is a little bit weak, there, I think there's no denying that, and so, um. What I was saying before is my second point, overall point, is that thank goodness we had a general fund balance. That can absorb uh a few hundred thousand dollars of expenses over revenue. It couldn't support a million, and whatever it was the other, you know, when we started out a million, two or three, whatever that number is. Before we made that change, you can't, just can't, it couldn't support it.
Well, then just real quick.
Yeah.
I see the water fund, you cut it from one point five over to three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, so that was a pretty good cut.
Yeah, and those cuts are taking out, thank you for bringing that up, they're taking out any capital, major capital expenditure. Uh, the first version had envisioned spending close to three quarters of a million. At railroad street and some reservoir improvement projects. Uh, we're not gonna bring that, that was taken out, we'll bring that back to council. Uh, when we have prioritized what those capital improvements are and have an overall, a, a plan of how to fund that. We can't fund it even with the uh, uh, I'd say modest increase in rates. It uh that was, that'll start this year, we can't fund that kind of capital, so that was taken out. Deferred, if you will, I would expect it to come back through probably utility and finance. Uh, with some sort of financing uh plan. In the first half of next year.
Okay, that's, those improvements would be what ODNR and EPA would say we have to do, correct?
They're real, yes, Mark, they're really, um, because we're working with them and not um being difficult. We're not in any kind of, um, we're still working to uh solve the problem. It's, we're not, we're quite a ways, I believe, from any citations or findings. In, in, um, in either our reservoir world or in our filtration distribution worlds.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it, I, I, that's all I would say about that.
Okay, everything else is pretty much, I mean, you cut one point nine million out of what we had last night.
Yeah, I think that's what, that's what last night's discussion brought about, so I think it was a joint. Think what we're trying to do is reach consensus on some tough issues. Um, I would say, you didn't ask, but I'll say, six oh five is, um, we're gonna, you know, have to be. We have to watch that, the fact that we're not selling, uh, this year, we didn't sell as much power. As we had a budgeted and anticipated, um, I'm not sure, I'm confident that our power usage. Will go up next year, so that's gonna, that's, that's something that all of us, um. Are gonna have to keep a, you know, a relatively close eye on that and monitor some purchases if possible.
Okay, I got a question about that, I thought about this last night.
Uh huh.
If we don't use it, then we don't buy it. So, what are these, those contracts?
No, this is where, this is where our, if you will, our overhead, I think if you, if you went to six oh five. To, to, the payroll I know is five twenty-five.
I, I, yes.
Yeah, so that's six thirty-eight is salary and wages and then benefits, scroll downs. Yeah, it's another three hundred thousand, so there's about a million in, in overhead there, just a, uh, not nearly as much. At the billing office, but it's that million and two or three hundred thousand of our operating overhead. It doesn't shrink, even though we aren't selling as much power, so, um. Our, our revenue coming in is the same, but our overhead expenses are, are pretty. I don't want to say fixed or frozen, but they don't have much flexibility. I think we're, we're, um. Any kind of reduction in staff at this point, you have to think through. Right, and that's, that's why, Mark and, and everyone else, is that that overhead's still there, that million three, our debt. Somebody can help, I think it's about eight hundred thousand, you guys, so the, you have one, you have about two million in overhead. That you just can't, we can't get out of our own way, if you will, we have debt that's fixed, our labor's relatively fixed. Uh, our equipment costs are relatively fixed, and so that's uh, that's why that happens. So we probably have two million dollars and we're selling a, uh, if you were to, if, if you look in the revenue report. The, I, I believe we were at eighty-two percent of revenue collected this year versus what we expected. So it, our, you know, our revenue is off twenty percent roughly.
Okay, the next, the next.
All night ahead of you, but that, I hope that explains that, I know it's a little bit. Um, we don't, we aren't paying for any power, but we have less units of power to spread our overhead.
The next one I have is maybe Eunice did not have a definitive answer on nine oh two last night. Did we find out what that is?
Not, yeah, that.
Yeah, last night I explained to you, I ran an audit trail on it. And it shows where we deposit the insurance premium money, and then we have to have a cushion in there to get it started. So that's for the health insurance premiums where there's um different amounts deposited in from the employees and stuff. And then the payments are made. Of course, it's not a revenue account, so it doesn't go into that, but that gets it started, if you, um. Trying to think if you guys get a report on that at the end of the month that would show you.
This is, um, this is the employee contribution to the health, uh, the healthcare. But they, they pay it over the course of a year. And we have to, as you said, jumpstart it with this amount, Eunice?
When you look at it, I'm working on pulling it up again, um, because when you look at it, you can see the different checks for each payroll. Getting the, hitting it, so let me pull it up so I can give an exact, more educated explanation. If you guys want to talk about something else, why I'm doing that, you can, I don't.
I, you know, I think the, the only thing I would add, just so I could perhaps be wrong again. Yeah, I think it has to do with our dental and our vision insurance. But.
Hey, hold on there.
That's off expensive dental work.
A good thing, I didn't mean to open that game. Got that, Eunice, or not, or is it?
I'm, I'm, I'm working, the connection's slow.
Well, if there is another question on the budget from Mark or anyone else, we could get that done and.
Yeah, that's why I said I don't want to hold it up. You need to come back to me, you can.
Well, I just think from looking at it real quick, since we just got it before the meeting. You cut one point two, or one point nine off of a five point eight, so. You know, if we're gonna have another meeting, are we gonna have time to look this, through this, or?
I, I think, I, I'm not gonna, I'm assuming that that's what the next meeting is going to allow us to do. A, a little time to, to go through it, come up with final questions and uh also allow. The, the public to see the document rather than, um, uh. Passing it on the, on the first reading by suspending the rules, I think, you know, uh, even though we're under a time crunch. I think that's, um, it's not fair uh to do that.
I would, the, I, I don't disagree, that's your prerogative, but I, I can't recall when um a citizen. Who was dedicated to this, or council members who have been dedicated, that they, we've ever spent four hours detailing this. So, um, it's not to say that there won't be a, a recommendation. Of something that could be changed or tweaked, but I also know that. There's a practicality of getting this passed, and this, this is, um. So that it can be, be finished up while the auditor and the auditor staff work on some other year-end things.
True, I, I.
Idea of keeping this ball in the air until an upcoming meeting when most of the questions. That we, um, most of the questions have been answered, um, there. I'll give you just a small one and I'll stop, Doc, so Eunice probably got that pulled up. I had a question today, I got told no, I didn't even, I didn't even grumble about it. In four oh one, which is the permanent improvement levy, or the permanent improvement fund. There's no appropriation there, so there's money, you look at the revenue side, there's projection of money coming in. But there's no way to spend it if we had a major capital improvements project development or otherwise that came up. So my point is, I know sometime in twenty-one, we'll come back and have a tweet to that document. So, uh, another school of thought would be to get this passed and as, um. Somebody identifies another change or something that was incorrectly entered, that could, that's gonna be, um. Amended a couple, three times, four times next year anyways, so.
I, I, I see your, your point, and um I do know that, um. We have to allow the uh auditor's office to get this, get this all entered. Um, so I, I guess, Mark, um, how, uh, or other members? Um, how are we feeling about, um, a motion to, uh, yes ma'am?
I will say this, this does not have the attachment to be able to pass it tonight, cause it does not have the. The, um, the proper attachment by category, it's too.
Really beat me to it.
Okay. And how soon would that be available?
Sorry.
Well, Doc, I got a question for the mayor.
Yeah, Doc, uh, Mark.
Okay, on the revenue side, I know we don't have anything to do with the revenue side, but. How close do you think these estimates are that you pin this revenue?
I can tell you, our office generated and did the revenue, um. We were very conservative with it, that's, um. You never wanna overestimate your revenues, um, they were reviewed multiple times, they were tweaked. Multiple times, April spent a lot of time on it, and. I, I feel pretty confident and comfortable with where those numbers are, I don't know if the mayor has anything further to add, but we. I don't know if it gives you an idea, but that has been in the works since I believe like September, um, that that has been being looked at and worked on. I didn't get the budget sheets till like a month ago, so a lot more time was spent on revenue than was on the expenses.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't really have much to add, other than I think they are, uh, conservative. They're on the income tax, they're, they're two percent. Reduction over this year's numbers, and this year's numbers didn't quite hit, uh, our estimate. So.
Okay, let me ask you this.
But, Mark, what it does is it gives us a low baseline of revenue, I think if anything. Uh, you know, if we had a major, uh, layoff or things are, are worse than twenty-one than some of us hope. Then, um, you know, they're, they're, uh. They're, they're going to be a little bit, um. Yeah, we're gonna have to watch them, I don't know exactly what to say, I think what, one of the things what we'll do is a cushion. And I didn't know if we get into this, is there's four positions that will be very cautious about. Uh, when we fill them, there are four upcoming retirements this year. Um, so for it, you know, while it's a hundred percent, now I'm gonna say a hundred, it's ninety some percent likely. That the new chief will come from within. Whether or not we filled a, the vacant lieutenant spot. Immediately is something that we'll be discussing, and then the other, uh, three retirements that fall. Uh, so that's a general fund retirement, the other three that fall into utilities and parks. What we, there's money in the budget to replace them immediately, pay their severance, but if it, if revenue. Is, um, puny, or revenue is off, then that might be our safety valve, so we're gonna. If revenue is, is worse than the auditor's office has predicted. Then we do have a little bit of, uh, as I said, a safety valve.
Let me ask you this question.
Yeah.
How comfortable are you with this being three point nine million over the revenue, the expenses?
I think it sucks, I think that we're, that, um, that no one intended that. I don't know if we can do a lot better. And like I said at the outset, I'm glad we had a little bit of cushion. To be able to absorb that, the, the obvious thing is that cushion that is the, uh, has the least. Um, flex or whatever you wanna say, that, that would be in the water fund. But. I don't know if that helps, or it really adds much, I, um. Yeah, they were cheap as hell, that's what I'd say about the auditor's office scale, they didn't give us any money, and. If it wasn't for their cheap estimates, we wouldn't have any tightness at all.
That's right. Real quick.
No, I think it's, I think that, that will be, well, we, we won't be burned, as Eunice said, you don't wanna overestimate, so. That's about, I don't have much else to add, except, you know, I'll just start saying silly things that are not productive, so.
In relation to what the mayor said on the two percent reduction as well. That was based on the state auditor's recommendation, as well as Rita, the regional income tax agency's estimations. So it wasn't just a number we pulled out of the air, we, we did some research on it.
You know, it, it, we, I didn't know we go here and you do have other work to do, but I would say that in my own. Review of the budget, like from this, you know, throughout the year, I, I've. Spent increasingly more time reviewing the revenue. Uh, and so, I'm more, a lot more, if you'd asked me that question two years ago, Mark. I would be less confident about, um. And, and be less able to talk to you about what the different revenue items are in the budget, I've. Uh, I think that's an important thing to study that, and so we'll continue to keep a close eye on, on the revenues and, and, um. You know, report back whether to utilities or to finance about how that's going. So, anyway. Did you find that detailed report, Eunice, so we go back and ask that, answer that nine oh one question?
Yeah, nine oh two, yes, I did, it is on the insurance, so when you look at, it's. And understand too, as we were talking about vision and dental, our vision, dental and medical is all paid together. It's all out of there, so all out of the same fund, um, when we pay it. So this is where it comes in and hits from the employees. And then is drawn out then with what goes in with the, um, city portion for the premiums.
So city employees that have the, that have the, I guess, call the city plan, we call that, where they don't really contribute, it's as high deductible. Their contribution would just be on, on any supplemental insurance like dental or vision, correct?
Um, not, not supplemental, I do a spreadsheet that breaks it down for each department, so. When you look at the budget sheets for like one oh one, ten, ten, five to two oh four, which is the hospitalization line. That's where the city's portion is coming from. So when you look at the revenue for, um, the nine oh two fund, you can see where the payroll. The employee, it literally says employee insurance premium deduction. Goes into here, and then is pulled in for the payment to the insurance company.
Alright, Mark, I bet you wish you didn't ask that question at this point.
Well, yeah. Okay, I got one more.
Sure.
On the electric, yesterday we saw in that sheet that that was estimated from some initials. Did anybody get a finer, did they call down to AMP and get? Because it.
Yeah, we did talk to them again, and that estimate, I, I, shoot, they're saying that that, that will use. Next year, the amount of power. That we expected to use this year. So that's. The consumption, the purchase of power, um. I don't know, I don't wanna act like I know more than them, but, but we didn't, we didn't have that level this year, so.
Okay.
I believe Nikki got an email from AMP, she forwarded information to me, and that's how that number got changed.
Yeah. So, you know, I think like always is the case, it just, we, we just have to, this year, more than in the past, monitoring. Those kinda big revenue items, electric and others, and big expense items, the, the. We, we won't, Gail's office won't be able to be in any way on autopilot, we're gonna have to keep real close tabs on that. But I do, you know, and then the last thing I'd say, Doc, if, 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 uh, if there are any other questions, there, I believe there's an advantage. Um, and I don't, I don't wanna be, uh, blow off the public, but, uh. Honestly, there were four hours, if you wanted to learn about the budget, you would, you had plenty of chances. And if council members are getting calls from, uh, citizens alarmed about one thing or another. Then I'd certainly say, yeah, let's give it a few more days, see if we can tweak it, but given the Christmas holiday. Um, um, you're, you're probably looking at. Day after Christmas, or what is it, whatever that is, Monday, Tuesday of next week. And I, and. So we are kinda running out of days, um, for, for, for continued consideration of the budget.
What additions does this ordinance need, Mr. Palmer?
Let's see if I'm muted, uh. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, for some reason, I'm.
There you go.
Um, what, what council passes, when they pass the budget, is a summary. Version of the budget that has cat, uh, the numbers in it by category, it's not the detailed thing that you have before you tonight. And that's what council passes each year, Eunice did a Herculean job today. Of trying to get that done before tonight's meeting, she was unable to get that accomplished. Through no fault of hers, and, uh, so that's the kinda thing that she just shared with you, she can get it tomorrow. So, you, you could have.
I, I, I asked, uh, how soon, and I. Uh, I, I misunderstood the answer.
Yeah, she's, she can do it instantly, basically, it, she worked on it again this afternoon, and. Julie and Eunice and I had a conference call about five thirty to see if we could get that done. Before council meeting, and, and that was not possible.
Okay.
Yeah, instantly is kind of a strong word, it's not.
But I gave you, okay, right.
I feel like a, a better question to ask may be, um, Eunice, do, do you require sleep at all, or how important is that to you? How much do you need, one, two hours a night, will that?
I don't know, that's why my camera's not on, I'm sleeping right now.
The, the other thing I would say about that is that there is. Uh, and if we can't do it tonight, then we gotta get this scheduled as, as, as quickly as possible. Even if, do we need twenty-four hours notice of another special meeting?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, you know, we may be talking nine o'clock tomorrow night, that's like absolutely less than ideal. But. You know, or we go to next Monday or, or Saturday, that.
I don't think that's acceptable.
I don't either.
Tomorrow is not good for me.
Okay, well, I guess what I would say, given that we need, uh. Output or product from Eunice and Julie, that they, they will have a, um, a lot to say, I think that. Maybe, maybe turns into early next week, folks.
Okay, anything else? Probably Monday would be the best if we could get together, because there's gonna be a short week next week also.
Absolutely. Okay.
Yeah, there's more.
I don't, I, I suppose what, what do we do then, uh, Mr. President or Mr. Chairman, as far as you give it a first reading? Or there really isn't an ordinance to?
There was an ordinance, it's just held to a first reading.
Yeah, we just. So, plan a meeting for maybe Monday night, we'll talk about later, but.
Okay.
Nothing else, consider this a first reading on the budget, and we'll move on to the next, uh, ordinance is twenty twenty dash ninety-three, it's the first reading.
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash ninety-three, an ordinance appropriating property interest described as parcel seven, now owned by Heather. Matrunic for the purpose of making or repairing roads which are open to the public without charge. Authorizing the appropriation of funds for deposit with the clerk of courts. And authorizing the city director of law to file a petition for appropriation in the court of common, please. Crawford County, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Hey, discussion on this order.
Um, the ordinance, uh, twenty twenty dash ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, and ninety-six. Are, um, very similar to the ordinances that we previously passed. In, uh, A, B, and C, um, and D. The difference being those were, uh, went through committee, um, these did not. Um, we, for whatever reason, need to proceed with, um. The, uh, uh, legis, uh, legal, uh. Appeal to the court of cl- common pleas on these properties, Mr. Palmer?
Exactly right, Dr. Felner, hopefully we won't have to on any of these, but we just wanna be ready in case we do.
Okay, um, I'd like to, uh, make a motion. To. Uh, suspend the rules and move to the final reading on ordinance twenty twenty dash ninety-three.
And I will second that.
Dr. Felner second by Mrs. Earle, suspend the rules on ninety-three, uh, roll call.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Suspend the rules passed by six and a vote, discussion on the ordinance.
Like to make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty dash ninety-three.
Bodkin second.
By Dr. Felner, second by Mr. Bodkins, uh, discussion. Roll call.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Well, this twenty twenty day, day three passed by six and a vote, moving on to ordinance twenty twenty dash ninety-four, first reading.
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash ninety-four, an ordinance appropriating property interest described as parcel thirty-four, now owned by Galleen, Ohio. Congregate, congregation of Jehovah Witnesses. For the purpose of making or repairing roads which are open to the public without charge. Authorizing the appropriation of funds for deposit with the clerk of courts. And authorizing the city director of law to file a petition for appropriation in the court of common, please, Crawford County, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, suspend the rules on ordinance twenty twenty dash ninety-four and proceed to the final reading.
Dr. Felner made the motion to suspend the rules, seconded by several here, Mr. Triplett. Roll call.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Let's suspend the rules on this ordinance passed by six and a vote, back to the discussion on the ordinance.
Make a motion to pass, uh, ordinance twenty twenty dash ninety-four.
Mr. Richard made the motion to pass.
I'll second.
Discussion. And roll call.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Motion, uh, that was passed six and oh, uh, next is ordinance twenty twenty dash ninety-five, first reading.
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash ninety-five, an order, ordinance appropriating property interest described as parcel. Forty-eight dash, as forty-eight T one and forty-eight T two, now owned by United Photographic Industries Incorporated. For the purpose of making or repairing roads which are open to the public without charge. Authorizing the appropriation of funds for deposit with the clerk of courts. And authorizing the city director of law to file petition, file petition for appropriation in the court of common, please. Crawford County, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
The ordinance discussion.
So I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance twenty twenty dash ninety-four and proceed to the final reading.
I will second that motion.
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five.
Dash ninety-five.
Okay, motion by Dr. Felner, second by, by Mr. Earleston.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, roll call.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Suspend the rules on this ordinance, passed six and a vote, discussion on the ordinance.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty dash ninety-six.
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five.
Sorry, ninety-five.
By Mr. Triplett, we have a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Richard seconded the motion, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty dash ninety-five, passed by, uh, six and a vote. Ordinance twenty twenty dash ninety five passed by six and O vote, last one is ordinance twenty twenty dash ninety six, first reading.
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash ninety six, an ordinance appropriating property interest described as parcel fifty two, now owned by Live and Group. LP for the purpose of making or repairing roads which are open to the public without charge. Authorizing the appropriation of funds for direct or for deposit with the clerk of courts. And authorizing the city director of law to file a petition for appropriation in the court of common, please Crawford County, Ohio. And declaring an emergency.
Read the ordinance and discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and proceed to the final reading on ordinance twenty twenty dash ninety six.
Move the motion by Dr. Felner, suspend the rules, seconded by Mr. Ivy, roll call.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplet.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Okay, uh, okay, discussion on the ordinance.
I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty dash ninety six.
Dr. Felner made a motion, seconded by. Mr. Triplet. Uh, Mrs. Earleston, uh, discussion and roll call.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Triplet.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Passed by six and O vote, moving on to other business, uh, council, anybody want to make an announcement for your committee meetings? Mrs. Earleston.
Yeah, um, our next committee meeting is going to be on January the twentieth. And I also just wanted to add that we were going to have a meeting last week for updates on the rollout of the vaccine. But things were changing so quickly that we um, held off on that. Uh, but due to all of the upcoming meetings and trying to get everything passed with the budget, budget. Um, I think instead of adding another meeting into all of our other meetings, we're, I just wanted to let you know that. Um, Trish just told me that they have been working tirelessly to get the vaccine plan in place. And get everything rolled out, starting tomorrow at seven AM, they're going to um, start. Vaccinating with the Galleon Fire EMS and other phase one uh, A individuals. And then they're going to continue with clinics into early next week. Um, until they have all been fully dispensed with their first shipment. And they are planning on continuing to have more shipments rolling weekly, on a weekly basis. Um, and continue to push it out to all eligible individuals as, as the vaccines become available. And they are also continuing to do contact tracing with all of this as well, so they're keeping very busy with all of this.
Thank you for the report, other council members.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, law ordinance uh, should be April fourth, or excuse me. Sorry. Alright, already, uh, January fourth, uh, at seven o'clock.
Fifth.
Oh, it's the fifth?
Yeah, you might be the twenty twenty calendar.
I was looking at the wrong one, my apologies.
At least you're in the right month. Mr. Triplet.
Well, if things don't change, it'll be January sixth.
Okay. Uh, who else? Mr. Ivy?
I believe it's the second Wednesday, uh, which would be the thirteenth, is that correct?
Yes.
Parks and Recreation, thank you.
Mr. Botkins?
Uh, fourteenth, January for streets and alleys.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, we've got uh, airport and economic development on January the nineteenth. And uh, finance on uh, January the twentieth.
Okay, thank you, uh, anything other business from the, any of the council members? If not, moving on to, like the official report, uh, Auditor Baldiger.
Yes, um, I don't have much tonight, uh, after the lengthy discussion we've been having on this budget. Um, that's just been the topic of the day, so we'll be continuing to work on this and uh. You guys will be meeting again Monday to vote on it, so other than that, I have nothing.
Okay, uh, Treasury Sparks is not on, is he?
No.
I don't believe, okay, next is Law Director Palmer.
I have nothing specific this year tonight, Mr. President, other than Merry Christmas, everybody.
Mary Lee.
Um, I think, uh, really don't have much to add. Uh, I think we made tremendous progress, uh, and I do genuinely appreciate the. Extra meetings and extra time council is putting in tight budget, but uh, I'm pretty confident Monday or whenever the special meeting is. We'll get this passed and, and uh, start focusing on executing, you know, the twenty one budget. So, good luck tonight selecting a, a new member.
Okay, while we're at it, do we want to uh, decide for sure, we're going to have a special meeting on Monday night? If you have a Tuesday, you're gonna give them Wednesday to work on things.
I'd like Monday if we could.
Monday's fine with me.
With me also.
Monday works for me.
Everybody works for uh, seven o'clock Monday night?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Okay.
President, uh, just want to ask, Eunice, would that give you enough time? If she's still on, that is.
Yeah, I'm still here, um, yeah, because I'll have the weekend and everything then to get everything done and finalized.
Throw that in.
Thank you.
Okay, special meeting, Julie, you're gonna get somebody to call this in?
Yeah, is it okay, um, with the finance committee, you'd like to be the ones to call that meeting?
Certainly.
Okay.
Okay.
Easy for me.
Julie.
Yeah.
I will need to coordinate with you to have some transfers on there.
Okay.
Then for the care, the CARES Act to clean up what we had talked about to get you the figures that I need to transfer for those.
Okay, yep, and then I think then and now, maybe.
At least, um, there's probably going to be two.
Yeah, then now, so yeah, okay. So we could have like four or five pieces of legislation, including what we, you know, didn't pass today.
Okay, next item on the agenda is uh, going to executive session to discuss uh. Large, uh, we have a motion to, this, this Earleston.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for the discussion of employee.
Is that worded right, Julie?
Public official.
Yeah.
Okay, public and official.
Appointment of a public.
Appointment of a.
Second, Mr. Botkins seconded, okay, a roll call.
Ms, Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplet.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, we're now in executive session.
I gotta turn everything off, though.
Uh, also, I'd like to add, also, Mr. President, I'd like to ask Mr. Palmer to join us.